Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight, October 2nd, for the Berkeley City Council District 5 Candidate Forum. My name is Joe Loss of the League of Women Voters Eden Area. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures. However, this forum is presented by the Voter Services and Education Arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. We'd like to acknowledge that we're at the beginning of the Jewish New Year, and some members of our community will not be able to view the live forum. The League offered scheduling and technical accommodations to candidates before we scheduled this fall's forums. That said, we will avoid having forums and events on holidays in the future and continue efforts to ensure our programming is as inclusive as possible. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. The ground rules are posted in the chat. Candidates are not permitted to display campaign buttons, t-shirts, signs, Zoom backgrounds, et cetera, in order to maintain neutrality. This forum is being broadcast on Berkeley Community Access Channel 33. We're also recording tonight's forum, and the session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org and on our YouTube channel. There are three candidates running for Berkeley City Council Member District 5. They are Todd Andrew, Naleng Gore, and Shoshana O'Keefe. The city council makes decisions about local laws and policies for the city using input from the community. The position of city council member is decided through ranked choice voting. Voters can, but are not required to, indicate their first, second, and third choice for an office. With ranked choice voting, the candidate who receives the majority of votes will be declared the winner. Your vote will not be valid, your ballot will not be valid if you vote for the same candidate more than once. So let's go over the ground rules. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks. The order was determined by the Wheel of Names. The timekeeper will signal candidates, and they cut down from two minutes to 15 seconds, and then read when the full two minutes is up. As people signed up via Zoom, they had the opportunity to submit questions. If you have additional questions, you can submit them by clicking on the Q&amp;A icon. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them on to me. All questions will be screened to avoid duplication and personal attacks. The order of answering questions will be alternated, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal the candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates may choose to use some or all of their one minute to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have one minute, I'm sorry, two minutes for an opening for closing statement. So we're going to start with the opening statements, and the order is candidate Gore will go first. Candidate Gore.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. First of all, I want to thank League of Women Voters for organizing this public forum. Such free public forums are roots of our democracy. They allow common people to learn about their local political candidates. This free public forum also allows candidates like myself to spread our campaign message without raising money from well-known donors or wasting public tax dollars in the name of public financing. Many of our services and programs are currently underfunded, and yet we have already used more than half a million dollars of general funds in supporting campaign advertisements for this year's election. We are also in the middle of existential threat of a climate change and going through extreme heat wave as we speak. We are even underestimating Berkeley's greenhouse gas emissions by not accounting for emissions associated with consumption of meat and dairy. This animal-based product accounts for more methane emissions than natural gas used in kitchen appliances. Berkeley Council has adopted several plant-based procurement policies, but none has been implemented so far. One of its biggest reasons is not having budget allocated to such initiative. Therefore, I am running for Berkeley City Council to address climate change as an existential threat, implement plant-based policies and programs, and show Berkeley that we can run grassroots election campaign without wasting public tax dollar. Today, it's also Gandhi's birth anniversary, so that's why I want to quote his sentence, which is my favorite. It says, "Greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way animals are being treated." Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Candidate Andrew, your opening statement, please. Oh, you're muted, sir.
Hi. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I came to Berkeley in 1999 to get married and start a family. I raised two children here through Berkeley Public Schools and focused on their lives and activities for my first 18 years. I'm running because I've been deeply motivated to improve our government and get better results after residents told me six years ago they didn't feel seen by their government. I dived into community service and advocacy, and the more involved I got, the more I came to realize that we were, in fact, living up to our ideals and aspirations. As a result of this engagement, I was appointed to the Homeless Commission and the Solano Avenue Business Improvement District Advisory Board, where I've served for five years and currently serve as Chair. My priorities are driven by deep conversations I've had with District 5 residents and fellow Berkeley leaders over the last six years. First, we need to proactively communicate with our fellow residents face-to-face. Email's just not enough. Second, we need to focus on our core responsibilities. I think most of us know we have some of the worst streets in the Bay Area, which is just part of over $2 billion in unfunded infrastructure liabilities, including storm sewers, sanitary sewers, fire stations, and the like. Third, we need to prioritize public safety and all its meanings. We have among the best BPD Police Department and Fire Departments in the country, yet BPD morale is low, staffing is low, and that contributes to budget busting over time. EFD staffing is also low, given the changes the city is going through in the increased fire risk. On street safety, I'm encouraged by the collaboration I see between BFD and other agencies to establish a street trauma prevention program to reduce serious injuries and deaths. Finally, we have to be sound stewards of our public funds. We can be true to our Berkeley values and build a brighter day for Berkeley at the same time. Don't let anyone tell you we can't. Thanks so much again, and I'd be honored to earn your vote.
Thank you. Candidate O'Keefe, your opening statement, please.
Hi. I was born and grew up in Berkeley, and I was raised with Berkeley values. Top among these values is a duty to serve my fellow humans and to actively serve my community. Throughout my life, I've lived these values in many different ways. In my twenties, I became a lawyer and worked as an immigration attorney, helping clients win asylum. Some of those cases were life. Later on, I worked as a field organizer for Barack Obama in 2008, and that was really, really, really powerful experience, got me into politics. After that, and after having two sons, I changed my career and I became a high school math teacher, and I now teach computer science at my alma mater, Berkeley High School. Nothing gives me more pleasure than serving our community's youth and uplifting them and getting to know them. It's really a wonderful job. Also, along the way, I volunteered to serve on the Zoning Adjustments Board, where I got into land use and actually used my law degree quite a bit. I'm currently the longest-serving member on the board, having completed 11 years of service, and I've served as Chair and Vice Chair for two years each, and I was elected unanimously each time. On ZAB, I am proud to say that I have approved over 10,000 units of much-needed new housing in my 11 years. Now, I'm asking to serve the community in a new way. I'm asking to represent District 5, where I have lived for 17 years in our city's governing leadership. Nothing could be more fulfilling than getting to express my deep love of our city this way. My priorities on council will be housing, sensible and safe bicycle infrastructure, and education, helping the city government coordinate better with our school district to serve our youth. I'm endorsed by a supermajority of the current council, a supermajority of the school board, the Alameda County Democratic Party, the Berkeley Firefighters, Labor Council, Building Trades, and Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurmond, and many more. Through my hard work in building relationships and gaining trust and confidence, I've earned all of their support, and I hope to earn yours today, tonight, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the question portion of our evening, and we will start with candidate Andrew. The first question, sir. If elected, what will be your policy priorities and what will you aim to accomplish during your term in office?
So, I kind of hinted at it in my opening comments. We are one of the top-spending cities of our size in the city of California, yet in my view, we don't get good bang for our buck. And in determining how we spend our general fund, I agree with Nilan. We need to reexamine that. We have up to about 20% of our homeowners who are below median income and many, many more who are on fixed incomes. So in my view, we need to begin spending more from our general fund on our core responsibilities. And in that way, we can prevent bond measure after bond measure after parcel tax after parcel tax, which could price some of these lower-income people out of their homes. And we can do this if we spend some of the significant revenue that we receive from new buildings on our core responsibilities. We'll study that, whether it's 20, 30, 40, 50% of revenue from new buildings. We have to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate O'Keefe.
Top priorities? Um, yes, I mentioned in my opening statement, my top priorities are housing, bicycle infrastructure, and education. Housing is my number one because it is the number one issue in Berkeley. Not only is our housing prices just their own problem, everybody lives it. Everybody who has to pay mortgage, pay rent, knows how ridiculous our housing prices are. Our housing crisis also underpins many other crises, including homelessness, climate change, lack of diversity, city staffing. It's a crisis. It's our number one issue. And I plan to find all ways to build as much housing as possible at every affordability level. I also want to build bicycle infrastructure. I have ideas. I hope someone asks me about that. And lastly, work with our school board to actually coordinate to serve our city's youth better. There hasn't been very good coordination, and my relationships in both worlds can really help.
Thank you. Candidate Norm.
My top priority would be to address the climate change as an existential threat, and what I mean by that, giving it a topmost priority. And that actually starts with us accounting for not only the greenhouse gas emissions that actually is produced within the city limits, but accounting for all the goods and services that actually we are consuming as a community and that are associated with directly emission of the greenhouse gas emissions. Consumption-based greenhouse gas emission inventory has been already published. My first priority would be to actually pass an ordinance that will, first of all, accept that consumption-based inventory and target some of the major categories of greenhouse gas emission. And one of the biggest for us is food, and majority of that food, greenhouse gas emissions associated with meat and dairy. We have already drafted policies that actually addresses meat and dairy consumption in Berkeley. I will make it a top priority to pass and implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, it goes to candidate O'Keefe first. Candidate Gore, you need to stay on screen. Thank you. Candidate O'Keefe, when you reflect on the work of the council over the last year, what do you think the council has gotten right and what areas are points of weakness?
Thank you for this question. Um, I want to say briefly, this is not really a policy thing, but the best thing our council has done has been the rematriation of the Shell mound property to the Alani people. I am so, so proud of our city for doing that. It took a lot of work. It cost a lot, and it is the best thing we've done. Beyond that, housing. We've done a great job with housing, and we're going to keep doing it. The missing middle housing is not quite passed, but it's going to be, and I think it's going to be great. We've upzoned, we've made exceptions, we've come into compliance with some wonderful state laws, which have happened, which is going to allow us to build more housing, more market-rate housing, more affordable housing, and more naturally affordable housing with the missing middle. And that's what I think we've done the best job at. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
Yes, I think the council has actually done excellent job in passing the plant-based food policies, also moving through and actually getting through the ordinance that actually addresses and accepts the consumption-based greenhouse gas inventory in Berkeley. So those are some of the really good things that we have done. We have also actually done a great work in passing nation's first natural gas ban. So those are some of the great things that we have done as a council. But what we are lacking is pretty much kind of taking people's perspective. When they're actually sending you an email, when they're making comments at the city council meetings, they're staying up until 12 o'clock, and I feel like council is just pulling out the pamphlet, the draft that they have already prepared, and they directly vote on that. It feels like the civic engagement is kind of not really appreciated and considered by the council, and that's what needs to be addressed, and I will definitely make sure to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Andrew.
Can you repeat the question real quick?
Sure. When you reflect on the work of the council over the last year, what do you think the council has gotten right and what areas are points of weakness?
Very well, thank you. That's an excellent question, and I think that the collaboration needs to improve. We've had two council members resign, as you probably know, over the last year, and both of them said that the system is broken. One of them's now running for mayor, but we need to be able to listen to each other and collaborate with one another. And I think that is one of the most important attributes of any candidate who wants to be on council, as well as candidates who recognize change. If we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to fall further into the hole that we're in on so many issues that we face. The other thing is, I would say, what we've done well is, I would agree with Shoshana, and it's very heartening to hear her say that she's in favor of the middle housing initiative, because I think that's one of the best things that council's done recently as well. Took them a little while. They passed the resolution in '21, and they wanted to have it done last year. But they got to it, and I support their action, and I think it was May. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for being comfortable to ask for the question to be repeated. I should have told you that at the beginning. If you'd like that, I'd be happy to repeat the question, as well as the question is being put in chat for you. So we move on to our next question. Candidate Gore, you're the first person on this one. Can you explain how the lens of disability rights and justice, like the lens for other marginalized groups, influences the policies that you endorse or adopt? Please share examples of when you've used this lens in shaping housing, healthcare, education, or transportation policy, where perspectives gained from the disability community has altered or reinforced a position that you hold?
Well, I would say that pretty much I have, for a long time, have been advocate for our unhoused community, and many of the people in the unhoused community, they have some sort of disability. And I have not only served in the Berkeley Homeless Commission, but I have also volunteered with Considered the Homeless for a long time. And until the midnight, I have actually distributed supplies and worked with the unhoused communities. When it comes to supporting these people and making sure that they have a land and they have a right to live within the Berkeley community, I have actually taken a guideline from here and there encampment. And when I was in the commission, I put together those guidelines and passed those guidelines and put it in front of the city council to actually sanction that particular land, which will allocate it to the residents of that particular encampment. And I also requested to actually provide them with the services, with the sanitation, and other works. Thank you so much.
Candidate Andrew.
And this is such an important question, because if people can't access just the basic needs in Berkeley, as well as everything that makes the city so special, then we have a problem. So I've been proud to advocate for the exploration of another new idea that I have, which is to explore a shuttle. We've got lots of shuttles, shuttle programs we could study, the West Berkeley Bear Wareham Shuttle, the Cal Shuttle, the Emery Go-Round, we've got Metro Micro in LA, and Samtrans has one. So I think because the hills is not well-served, and my district includes much of the hills, by public transit, we should explore the possibility of helping people get around by exploring a shuttle. The second thing is, a homeless commission colleague of mine, when the homeless commission existed, was also a disability rights advocate, and she was discouraged by the fact that the homeless center between Virginia and Cedar on Second Street, called the Stair Center, was not disability compliant. So I think the city first has to do its job on compliance for disability. Thank you so much.
And candidate O'Keefe.
I love this question. Whoever asked it, thank you so much. I strongly believe that mandating equal access is one of the most beautiful examples of a good government. The free market does not support equal access, and the government is there to correct that injustice. And even though it might be more expensive, it doesn't matter, because equal access and fairness is our highest value as a society. And I believe that the ADA is one of the most impressive civil rights initiatives of all time. What have I actually done on the zoning board? Many things, but on the zoning board, one thing that comes to mind is, we were for a long time, until it actually became codified, we were advocating with developers to put fully accessible units on the first floor, which is probably where somebody who used a wheelchair would probably choose to live on the first floor. So we asked developers, even though it wasn't required, to make all the bottom four units fully accessible.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question. Candidate Andrew, this is for you. And I want you to know that this question came to you from the attendees. So that's exciting that the three of you have an engaged group of people watching tonight. So here's the question. What concrete actions do you think should be taken to mitigate the wildfire danger that exists in the wildland-urban interface area, which is most of District SIS, that will affect all the residents of the city as well?
That's such a good question. So Measure FF was passed by the people of Berkeley to help address this, and I think the fire department's been doing a pretty good job of implementing it. I attended, I walked along on one of the wildland-urban interface home inspections and learned a lot about how to harden a home against, existing homes against fire. I think we also need to acknowledge that we also have a car and a street problem in the hills, because it's about evacuation as well as emergency access. So we have to come to grips with how to deal with that. Some of the streets have been red-curved. I don't think we've paid enough attention to it. The other thing is, I would like to explore, my understanding is, most of the eucalyptus have been eradicated on public lands. I'd like to explore some kind of incentive for private individuals to take care of the eucalyptus, because my understanding is, if we get a fire in the eucalyptus canopy, those embers are going to be headed toward the bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate O'Keefe.
So mitigating fire risk has two meanings to me. One is preventing a fire from happening in the first place, and because we cannot do that 100%, if, God forbid, a fire happens, keeping people safe. So mitigating the risk of the fire happening in the first place, it's vegetation removal, as candidate Andrew already mentioned. We've got to get rid of all the eucalyptuses and just keep track of the, keep the vegetation under control. The public lands have been mostly taken care of within the city of Berkeley, but we need to be working with the regional parks, East Bay Mud and UC Berkeley, and of course, private landowners, to actually remove more vegetation, and specifically the eucalyptus trees. It's really like, we have to get rid of all of them. Sorry. I know they're beautiful, but they are like firebombs just sitting there waiting to explode. It's the number one thing. And then, should a fire happen, we need to keep our citizens safe and help them get out. We need to make sure the entire city knows about our evacuation routes. We have to do more education, and Measure FF has done a good job of this. We have to keep doing it. We need to have our alert system, our sirens, in place, which we do, and we're going to keep doing that, and red-curbing so that people can get out in the event of a fire safely.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with what's earlier being said by Andrew as well as Shoshana. I completely agree with the strategies to mitigate the wildfire in the Berkeley. But I also want to point out that the way of preventing the wildfire is for us to aggressively address the climate change. And the one way to actually do it is, already the IPCC has laid out a report in front of us and said that we need to cut down 45% of our methane emission just because it has 75% times more global warming potential than carbon dioxide. Whether it's a United States inventory, California inventory, or Berkeley's inventory, meat and dairy consumption has always associated with more methane emissions. And one of the best ways we could actually limit the global surface temperature warming below 1.5 C is by shifting our food system to plant-based, and that's the one thing that we need to actually do as a community.
Thank you. So our next question will go to candidate O'Keefe first. What approaches would you take to support the small business community and economic development more generally?
A pretty general question. I'm trying to think of, there's a lot of different issues in different parts of the city. I know that many small businesses complain about safety. Downtown, for instance, is a big common complaint. So we need to really, really address crime by giving our police department there as much resources as they need and helping them fully staff up. I'd also like to look into giving the police more technology. I'm very pro-tech candidate. I teach computer science, and I do teach data privacy to my students, so I do understand those issues very well. I would like to give the police whatever technology they need to do their jobs more effectively so that we can actually increase our ability to fight crime. I also have, would like to see the Solano Avenue revitalization plan that was passed in 2019. I'd like to see that happen. It's a really, really good idea. You should check it out if you don't know about it. It's going to make Solano Avenue an absolute destination that will help the small businesses there.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
I think we need to actually have a more stronger and a better relationship with the small business owners, whether we are actually planning a bicycle lane at the Hopkins and understanding its impact on the small businesses, or we have a diverse small businesses and how they could actually plan on amplifying those cultural diversity and invite more of the Berkeley folks to support their small businesses. These are some of the ideas which would really help small businesses to actually thrive in the Berkeley community that actually celebrates the diversity, that actually celebrates the family-owned small businesses. So I think what we need is a better collaboration with the small businesses. One thing that I have also seen pretty much is how in Albany, there are restaurants that actually celebrate a Green Monday programs, meaning they actually serve vegan food on every Monday. We could actually also do that in a Berkeley as well, and I know many of the Berkeley businesses have been already doing that. We are the home of so many vegan and vegetarian populations. So I think by collaborating with small businesses, we can definitely support them.
Thank you. And candidate Andrew.
So it's amazing how many questions we can answer just by... So it's amazing how many questions we can answer just by improving the quality, responsiveness and effectiveness of our government. As the Chair of the Solano Avenue Business Improvement District Advisory Board, I hear every day how merchants, how difficult being a small independent business in Berkeley can be. And of course, small independent businesses are one of the things that we value so greatly about this city. So I agree with Shoshana. We've got to look at public safety measures and as care courts are implemented hopefully on time by Alameda County, we won't have people experiencing violence on Solano Avenue like one of my did, board colleagues did recently, that those people will get the care that they need. We implemented a small business support program in 2018 and just finished that up with some zoning changes, expanding opportunities for nightlife on Solano Avenue and throughout the city. And I think we need to evaluate those changes as we go forward. And I think my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. So I had to get up and turn the fan on. You guys are really heating up my room here. So we'll move to our next question and it goes to candidate Gore first. Do you think the city council should have passed a Gaza War ceasefire resolution in response to the urgent humanitarian crisis as Albany did last spring? Candidate Gore.
Yes, I completely, and then thank you so much for asking that question. I have also received an email as well from your group and I need to respond. Yes, my answer is I will absolutely support the resolution. I stand for, and that is one of my major platform issues, it's a one health. What it means is that we are living in an interconnected world. Our well being is dependent on the fellow human beings environment as well as non-human animals. And when one gets impacted, all rest of us gets impacted. I think we have this notion of ignorance that if something is happening far away from Berkeley, it does not impact my life. But I do know that if my house was actually on a fire, I need to actually get up and be proactive about that. I think all of us need to be that proactive about whatever violence that's happening outside our home, in our community or outside our community. So the short answer is yes, I will completely support the resolution.
Thank you. Candidate Andrew.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. I'm appalled as my kids are by what's happening in the Middle East. I read within the last day or two that aid shipments have been interfered with and some have been destroyed and that kind of thing. So I have deep, deep concerns and reservations about what's happening. And I, I would hope that our federal government could do a better job. But I would, one of the things I've said in this campaign is that international issues do not belong in front of our city council. So I have to disagree with Nilong despite my personal, just, I, I can't even believe what my eyes see sometimes what's happening. I have to disagree. Let's focus on our core responsibilities, our municipal responsibilities, and improve life for people around here and leave the international issues to the federal government. Thank you.
Candidate O'Keefe.
Yeah, I'm going to have to agree with candidate Andrew. I, if such a thing comes before council when I'm on it, I will abstain. I ask anyone who knew me in high school, which is about, which is when I became aware of Berkeley politics for the first time. And back then in the nineties, they were passing all kinds of resolutions on international politics. And it didn't matter what it was to me. I thought that was a waste of city resources and a waste of city time. I always have felt that way. It feels, it feels performative and that's not what city government is here to do. I know that it comes from a good place. It comes from wanting peace. Of course I want peace as well, but I just, it, it doesn't help. In this case, it actually ended up being very divisive for our community. So it, it was, it was harmful. And I will say that not only will I not support such a resolution, but when I'm on council, if anything of international, in the international world comes before us, I will abstain, no matter what it is.
Thank you. So we'll move to our next question. That will be candidate Andrew first. What is your position on Measures EE and FF?
So I am a supporter of Measure FF and not EE. FF has more money to fix the streets. It's got just about as much money to fix the sidewalks. It says we're going to do what we actually said we were going to do and the, all the plans we've passed from complete streets to the pedestrian plan to the bicycle plan to Vision Zero. We're going to do what we say we're going to do, which is one of the things I'm running on. I believe that. In addition to the fact that if we pave a street without safety improvements, depending upon the kind of street, it actually becomes more dangerous. There's other information floating around out there in the ether that's incorrect. We have data on this and evidence from beyond Berkeley, but we don't even need to go beyond Berkeley for the evidence. If we take a just fix it approach or just pave it approach to a street like Hopkins, it's going to end up like Rose where cars are doing five, six miles per hour more than they did before it was repaved, no additional safety improvements. More cars are going 45 miles per hour, et cetera. So yes, on FF. Thank you.
Candidate O'Keefe.
Here, I'm going to have to disagree with candidate Andrew. I am supporting Measure EE and not FF. Now, for the record, I don't think FF is bad. I hope that one of those two measures passes rather than neither. We absolutely need money to fix our streets. But Measure EE is a much smarter and more direct way to, to fix the problems that we have. I have a vision, as I mentioned in the beginning, of smart, practical, efficient bicycle infrastructure, which is not what FF promises. We have an amazing network of bike infrastructure already. It's called the Bicycle Boulevards. I am a daily bike commuter. I take two of them every day to work and it's fantastic. I do not like the cycle tracks that have been put in various places in the city. Neither do many, many constituents. I've talked to a lot of people, almost everybody hates them, serious bikers, casual bikers alike. So EE is much more targeted to just spend the money on bicycle boulevards and that's why I support it.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
Yeah, I actually support EE and I think that EE has actually a much better resources, a bigger resources compared to FF to actually face our, fix our sidewalks as well as the streets. But as a voter, I think I'm going to actually vote yes on both. And if I understand correctly, if both actually gets passes, then whosoever actually has the majority of the votes becomes the law. And I think our streets and the sidewalks definitely needs attention. So my answer is yes on both. But I also want to say that the opinion of as a candidate may actually differ on different measures and things like that. But I want to actually say my always decision making is rooted in communal activity, in, in communal equity instead of individual interests. So for an example, if it's a housing, if it's a homelessness, I always support, whether it's any kind of a ballot measure, I always support what actually prioritizes communal equity or individual interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, our next question will go to candidate O'Keefe. What, can you describe a time when you had to take a controversial but important policy decision position publicly without the support of your peers?
Yes, I have a good one. This might actually not seem that consequential, but this is a very powerful story for me. On the zoning board, about two years ago, we had something come before us that was a variance. And what a variance is, is an exception to the law. Says you don't have to follow the law in this case because, and there's certain findings that have to be met. And it's a very high bar, as you might imagine, because we're not applying the law. And I'm very skeptical of variances. I almost never vote for them and they almost never come before us. And one came before us and the justification for the variance they were asking for was not good. And I felt that if we, by the way, it was a great project. It was the Willard Clubhouse. Like I wanted that project built, but the findings they were asking us to make were so vague that I felt that had it passed, like laws would have no more meaning. We could have a variance on anything. And I argued and argued with the zoning board and it was an eight to one vote. And I'm very proud of that vote. And actually I ended, the staff ended up rewriting the variance findings when it was appealed and what was passed was actually much better.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
Yeah, I think sanction and campment actually triggers lots of emotions and reactions in our community. But I definitely did not actually kind of distract my mind from what actually the arguments were against the sanction and campment. I looked at what's the right thing to do was to actually give a piece of a land to a people who really needed it. They need, they have the rights to live in a Berkeley community. Just because they don't have home doesn't mean that they are not resident. And considering what's right thing to do, I actually put together a sanction and campment plan. And that actually was passed by the homeless commission and went in front of the Berkeley council. They did not adopt it, but I still went against the majority and did what was the right thing. Second thing was plant based procurement policy. City of Berkeley actually puts tax dollars, money nearly $5 million towards procuring the food for senior centers. I put together the plant based procurement policy that shift towards plant based food. And after lots of resistance and lots of argument, it was finally adopted by the city, city council back in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, candidate Andrew.
Thank you. I really appreciate this question because we are all running to represent everyone in District Five and our votes will impact everyone in Berkeley, not just specific interest groups. And I have a very specific interest group that I belong to at one point, which was the California Association of Realtors and the local association of realtors. I'm no longer a Realtor, but I was at one time. And I'm also a tenant in a rent controlled apartment in North Berkeley and have been on Hopkins here for 17 years after living in a house on Cedar Street, California. So I've come out in favor of rent control, which my colleagues were not fascinated with or fond of. But respectfully, we had a discussion and that's what it's all about, having these respectful discussions. I've also disagreed with the Realtor Association on prior initiatives and propositions at the state level and agreed with some as well. But it's important to be able to have those discussions and come out courageously in the public interest, I think, and what you really believe, not your specific interests.
Thank you. We have one last question that has come again from the attendees. This will go to candidate Gore first. How do you plan to work with your colleagues and community stakeholders to ensure senior citizens do not become homeless and are left to live in poorly maintained housing in Berkeley?
That's an excellent question. I think that what we need is definitely a stronger rent protection. Be what we need is more affordable housing. Right now we have 150 affordable housing units that's under constructions. I think we need actually more, not only to actually address our unhoused community needs, but also to make sure that low income seniors don't actually fall into the risk of being on the street. And so that's why I think what we need to do is we need to actually hire a staff person that permanently dedicated towards applying for private grants. I think we need to take advantage of tax credit program. We need a strong advocacy towards developers and making sure that they understand the tax credit programs and allocate more affordable housing units. We also need to actually make sure that the healthy food at no more cost are actually being served at North as well as the South Berkeley senior centers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, candidate Andrew.
Yes, thank you. Again, this kind of is near and dear to my heart. I think whatever efforts we can support to make sure that we catch people before they fall through the cracks is important. So I want to see us fully fund our housing preservation as well as our housing production issues, both at all levels, but especially the affordable housing. I want to see us continue and perhaps even expand the rental safety program, rental housing safety program. I've had inspectors here before. Sometimes it can be kind of perfunctory. We need to make sure things are, are safe because when I called them out here on a separate issue, they found lots of things that weren't safe. And I think that's, that's where I'll leave it. I just think it's an incredibly important issue that we catch people before they fall through the cracks because then it's too late. So that needs to be our central focus.
Thank you. Candidate O'Keefe.
Yes, thanks also for this question. It's, it's a really important issue. A couple of thoughts come to mind. One is, as I think both other candidates mentioned, our city has excellent rentals, rental protection of renters. We have, we can help people with rental assistance. We help negotiate problems with landlords. We have really good rent protections in the city. It's something I'm very proud of, one of the reasons I love this city so much. Another thing that comes to mind is with homelessness, which I'm sorry we didn't get to talk about tonight. We offer people whatever services they need. That's how we've been addressing homelessness and it's how we've gotten over 1,000 people rehomed. These same services can be offered to people who have homes and are at risk of losing them. So whatever services a senior citizen might need, we are the city who will give it to them. And lastly, affordable housing. The missing middle housing is designed to make small, we call them granny units. More housing appropriate for seniors will mitigate the problem.
Thank you. Before the candidates give their closing statements, I have a few remarks on behalf of the League of Women Voters. Berkeley, Albany, Emeryville. Remember I have, not from this area, I have to remember. Thank you to the candidates for running for office and for your participation this evening. I also want to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, pros and cons, and positions on ballot measures, please visit the League's website, l w v b a e dot org or vote four one one dot org. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. Visit our website and social media accounts at L W V B A E. So the last day to register to vote is October 21st this year. You can register to vote online at the Secretary of State's website, s o s dot C A dot gov. All California active registered voters will receive a vote by mail ballot for the November 5th general election. The county elections office will begin mailing ballots by October 7th. Vote by mail ballots can be returned by mail at a drop off location or your county elections office. Ballot drop off locations open on October 8th. Since Alameda County is a voter choice county, vote centers will be open for early in-person voting beginning on October 26th. Vote by mail ballots must be poked marked on or before Election Day and received by November 12th, 2024. Now the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. Each candidate will give a closing statement of two minutes. And we will begin with candidate O'Keefe.
Thanks so much and thanks so much for having this forum and for, and for inviting me. I love this city so much. I am patriotic for Berkeley. I always have been. A lot of people are asking me, you know, why are you running? It's a common question and it's a good question because I already have a job that I really like. And, you know, and I've never been politically ambitious. But the reason I'm running is that I really believe that I can do a great job. I think I have a really unique set of skills and experiences and relationships that will make me uniquely effective at this job. And so I have to, right? I'm called to. And just to name those qualifications, I am a lawyer. I can read laws and understand them and understand how our government works. I've used that on ZAB all the time. I am a teacher in this community. I know so many people in this community. I know what their problems are. I know what their needs are. I know their children. I know the parents. I know so many people at many levels, at the YMCA where I used to volunteer, my kids preschool. My, as a parent, member of the SSC, I got to meet all the Malcolm X parents. I, I just, I'm really entrenched in this community and I understand it very well. And all of those, all of these experiences that I've had have allowed me to step into this role and will allow me to do a great job. As I mentioned, I have broad endorsements from across the community because I've, I've built this trust and I've built these relationships with the school board, with the council, with, with many people in BUSD. I am going to do a great job and I really hope that I've earned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candidate Andrew, may we have your closing statement, please?
Yeah, thank you to my fellow candidates, Shashana and Nilang for a great discussion. As a twenty-five-year Berkeley resident, I left the governing up to others for my first eighteen years here and focused on my family. But I've immersed myself in public service and leadership over the last six years and am ready to serve on day one. In my view, the most important criteria for candidates in this election are focus on service, not politics, demonstrated leadership qualities and almost most importantly, recognition that we need to make some changes. Ask yourself, if experience in public office or the endorsement of establishment politicians with experience in public office is so important, then how did we get here? Stay with me. Why do we have two billion dollars in unfunded infrastructure liabilities? Why do we have one of the highest rates of property crime in the state while our police are chronically understaffed and morale is low? How did we fall so far behind in our health inspections of food establishments, some of which weren't expected for years? How did we misplace six million dollars in our fleet budget? How did we allow the methane, speaking of Nilang's issue, methane containment system at Cesar Chavez Park to fail and how much damage has been done to the climate? It gives me no pleasure to enumerate these shortcomings, but the way forward is to have some humility and recognize the need for change. Lori Capitelli, the prior District Five Council member, has endorsed me precisely because he recognizes the need for change and has some humility around mistakes that are made, that were made and that have been exacerbated since he left office. I'm also endorsed by many commission members, including Jeff Vincent, Chair of the Planning Commission, former firefighter Mike Wilson, who's a member of the Disaster and Fire Safety Commission, Phyllis Orick on the Aging Commission, and every member of the Business Improvement District Advisory Board I work with. I'm a dedicated public servant, not a politician. I've been deeply involved in community service advocacy and leadership for six years and I want to serve the people of District Five in Berkeley with what I've learned and will do so with all my heart. We can turn this around and still be true to our Berkeley values. We can build a brighter day for Berkeley by focusing on our core municipal responsibilities. I'd be honored to earn your voting if you're in District Five. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Candidate Gore, may we have your closing statement, please?
Yes, thank you everyone for joining us on a free public forum today. Before my closing remarks, I want to remind everyone that climate change is amplifying all of the local issues we discussed today. We need to cultivate a global perspective to recognize that climate change will continue to displace low-income population to places with a better climate resiliency. Housing crisis, homelessness and many other local issues will not be able to fully address just downstream solutions like building more houses. We need to aggressively reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. We need to prioritize shifting towards plant-based food system locally. Not everyone can buy an electric car, but everyone must have access to healthy and sustainable plant-based food. This is the very climate equity. In closing, I want to share with you that I'm endorsed by grassroots leaders of our community like mayoral candidate Kate Harrison, Councilmember Cheryl Davila, and Mental Health Commissioner and longtime unhoused community activist Bonachima. Like these leaders, I'm not a career politician. Instead, I'm committed to doing the right thing for my community because I know my and my family's well-being is dependent on the fellow Berkeley residents and our shared resources. This is the reason why I'm not wasting public tax dollar in the name of public financing. I'm running the first donation-free campaign to preserve a general fund for addressing the dire needs of our community. I will lead with these values if elected. So I request you to go to nilangforberkeley.com and learn more about my eight years of community work in the Berkeley, my campaign priorities, and then please, please consider voting for me in November election. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please join me in a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you for attending and making the effort to be an educated voter. It's important that you understand and see the perspective of the all candidates for the office. We ask you to, to remember to visit vote four one one dot org to have more information on the election. Please vote on November fifth. Thank you so much. Good evening. Did a great job.